I want to order the committee of the whole meeting for the Village of Roscoe to Tuesday, May 21st, 24. Who will call please?
Malaco?
Here.
Teddy? Here. Block?
Here.
Simon?
Here.
Right.
Here.
Gus, listen. Here.
Motion to approve the minutes, sorry, my words for the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes for the May 7th, 2024. So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Malaco, second by trustee Block. Who will call?
Simon?
Yeah.
Block?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Malaco?
Yes.
Item in public comment. Is there any public comment? Public comment at the end as well. Anybody would like to speak then? Seeing of all the comment now, move on to old business, new business. Item number two is discussion recommendation of the issuance of special event permit for the TruCity Flex Series Disc Golf events taking place on Sunday, June 23rd at Quarter Park Disc Golf Course. Have a motion to.
So moved. Second.
There's a section in the board packet and what the events, Disc Golf events at the Quarter Park. Any questions? Otherwise, you have a roll call please.
Simon?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
All right, item number three, discussion recommendation of a special event permit for the Rock Valley Radio Patrol Flying Clubs. Are you, oh, it's pretty, alright, Radio Patrol Flying Clubs events, quote, quote flying of microplanes events at Chickory Ridge Park on August 24th, 2024. This is the second of their events. They do two events annually every year at Chickory Ridge Park. The only sort of special request that they have, we usually prove on that, is that they do have a small, like a little rowboat that they use on that, like a Friday water out there, just recovering planes, if they're remote patrol recovery units, that work. So, but they do usually have a remote control boat that flex the planes up right out there. This will be second of those events. Any questions about that? Otherwise, the motion is to approve that on that. So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Malaco, second, by trustee Block. Who will call?
Teddy? Yes. Simon?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yes.
Item four, especially if Villas Secretary State DMV facilities located at Roscoe Village Hall. Service something I'm not in the board packet about that. Reasons came up. Now, what we talked was every few years we talk about, you know, what we can do maybe for the Secretary State's office if we want to ask for more services, satisfied with their. But this came up at this time is that they're actually going to be switching statewide all of their networks from some sort of telephone lines, T1 lines, to fiber optic lines. So they've requested to put a fiber optic connection and well go from down that hole across the street, under the road, over and up and snap that they would think of an issue. But they will be spending some money getting that fiber optics running into the village hall. So, for keeping here and continuing to have them use that facility over here, should approve it. If there's any discussion about, and we had every few years, about using that area for something else, we have that discussion now. But this is the time to do it before they spend all the money putting in fiber optics or buying from there. And I will let them know, but figure opening up to the board for discussion to know what your feelings are and how you want us to proceed.
I can start with this. I think that we need to start with our constituents and giving them what they want. People are overwhelmingly in favor of having this facility here. It fits with our plan with bringing people downtown and having them linger. And I'm 100% on board that we remain, we keep that, that facility in place.
I'm in agreement.
Wish I could just talk to them about maybe increasing services if we could. I don't know, that we can certainly do that, see how they.
It would be fantastic. That's been standing.
It's always been an issue, yeah. Yep, yep. I know they're sort of backing off services, but there's some here that I think maybe they can face too.
Yeah.
Driving tests are always an issue here because of parking. It's always been a problem with why they have not had driving tests here. But they may, we can talk to them, maybe sort of allow me to try to get maybe some more services.
What it takes for the real idea, I, I'm not proving on what that takes, can make.
They were working on it from what Scott told me, but something happened and they got pushed back.
And I'm wondering if the network issue is one of the reasons too maybe.
Yeah, there was something. They were really, really close because I've been waiting for it too. And he told me before he left that it had gotten pushed back.
Yep, okay. I'll look at all of them and we talked to them about fiber optics too, to update on that. They're intending on doing that as well.
So with the fiber optics, can we benefit from that in any way? Is there anything we can use or?
We probably, well, it is, we're running here anyway. We should be able to then subscribe to it as well. We've been looking for a backup network here anyway, for the past couple of years, we did one probably. So we'll try to talk about that different tier and see what their pricing would be on that. Since it will already be in their plan, I have put in.
I'd like to make that in the, oh, we don't even have to make it. Well, perhaps just go around and say your name to the support so that there's clear indication as to the consensus. I support.
Dave?
I do too.
I support it as well.
Support. Excellent. Alright. Item number five is. This is a discussion of the residential driveway standards. It just came up a few weeks ago. We currently have a standards, and I've got those in your board packet as well, to sort of see what our current requirements are, you know, our current needs. There was some discussion. We had a variance request come through, saying wanting to sort of wider entryway, wider driveway across the frontage of his property. So they could have a RV park there, a large RV, and use that to park there in their driveway. And for that point, slightly wanting to make some discussion about that. So I will open up for some discussion, see which general directions. Do you have a, did you exhibit for that?
Yeah, if I put them in the board.
Point a.
Yeah, I uploaded, which maybe, I'm not sure if they got republished or not, but I can, I can always pass these around Joe if you want me to. I have a few of these.
Would you please?
I'm looking through my.
Yeah, I'm gonna put it up on the screen too.
Oh, unfortunately, one copy. So, you flip through, it's essentially what you'll be looking at is I did quick exhibits showing what our current ordinance allows for driveway widening up to 24 feet at the right of way. I also put together an exhibit to show what the parking pad, residential parking pads are, what they look like allowed by ordinance. And then I did a, an exhibit showing what a 30-foot wide driveway would look like. So obviously, as part, this isn't, it's not a, you know, engineered exhibit by any means, it's just a hand sketch. But essentially what we're trying to do is just show you the amount of impervious area that would be increased if this, if this ordinance were to be passed or changed.
As. Where do you have that at?
I uploaded it in as an attachment to the, the presentation item.
Oh, okay.
So essentially, I, I think at least, I know me personally, I feel like the existing ordinance at 24 foot wide with the, with the opportunity to construct a residential parking pad provides plenty of opportunity for residents to have enough space to park recreational vehicles, their own personal vehicles. Even if people have, you know, multiple kids or other family members living at the house. So we wanted to put a, a quick graphic together. I believe also, I'm not sure if Elias is on as well. I know he wanted to talk about some of the things from a zoning standpoint. I wanted to talk about things from a stormwater standpoint. So as you guys may or may not know, when residential subdivisions are designed, there's a certain amount of impervious area of what we would call, you know, black tops, hard escape roofs, you know, sheds, things like that, that go into the ultimate stormwater management design. Our current, most of our residential subdivisions are rural subdivisions with ditches and culverts. If you, if we were to allow 30-foot wide at the right of way, that would essentially allow every single home on that block in that neighborhood to increase their total impervious area. And that could have some detrimental effects to flooding. As you guys may notice, a lot of the storms are getting much more severe in recent years. Actually, a lot of the rainfall data that we use in engineering is being increased and updated routinely. And it's created many flooding issues, obviously around our village, but in other communities. So while it might seem like a good thing to allow and to potentially change to allow 30-foot at the wider, at the right of way, there are some detrimental effects that we wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of. Ultimately, to, you know, have tangible evidence of what that would look like, we would need to do a full-fledged drainage study on an example subdivision to really see what that is going to look like. But ditches are meant to not just carry water and transport it to the ultimate receiving, you know, the downstream receiving waters. But they also act as temporary detention space for that water to dissipate into the ground. So when you go from a 24-foot wide driveway to a 30-foot, that is more fill being put into these ditches, which then lessens the amount of volume for those ditches to hold stormwater runoff. So from an engineering perspective, I have some, I, I guess I have some concerns if we were to move that route. Obviously, it's not going to apply to every single subdivision. It depends on density, you know, how much green space. I wouldn't say that, you know, a promontory ridge where the lots are much larger is going to have as much of a negative effect as, you know, say a neighborhood that is extremely dense with, you know, quarter acre, third acre lots. So I, I just really think that we, you know, I, I don't necessarily support it or I'm not against it. I just think we maybe need to have some further discussions and look into some of the, you know, engineering sides and the other zoning side of things before decisions are made to just allow 30-foot at the right of way.
Would that increase our cost more when we're putting in roads and stuff into for replacing that apron?
Yes, it would. So the way the ordinance is currently written, routine maintenance all the way up to the roadway, even into the, the right of way is the homeowner's responsibility. If they feel that their driveway is in poor condition and they want to repair it, we would not just replace the approach in the right of way unless we were doing a road project adjacent or on the road that those driveways are connected to. So yes, I mean, if we're going from 24-foot to 30-foot, that, you know, that's a 25% increase in materials that we have to then replace for the driveways. So that is absolutely something that should be considered moving forward. Yeah, I guess short answer, yes.
Was there not also some exploration of being able to perhaps expand, I'm not sure what term is, the apron?
At the right of, yeah.
Being into the exit portion of the driveway?
That's correct. So the way our ordinance is, and Joe, if you could, you could do that one because that shows also the, nope, down a little bit. That also, so this shows what the widening could look like, that hatch pattern there. This goes from an actual 18-foot wide existing driveway widened out to 24 feet. That is actually a common misconception among a lot of residents and people that I talk to. They feel that they want a 30-foot driveway and I, I always offer when somebody's applying for a driveway permit, I offer to meet them and lay out what is allowed for the ordinance so that they can actually get a visual. So I'd say, you know, two dozen residents I've met with and laid things out. And quite a few of them, once they see really how wide 24 feet is at the right of way line, they say, oh, yeah, I do not want to go for the 30-foot. Now, there are absolutely people on the flip side who say, no, I still want to, I still want to go for the 30-foot. I need more space and currently, we can't allow that, but there are variance procedures that they can go through to ultimately get approval. As you guys know, one was laid over just a couple of meetings ago for that same reason. So as Carol was stating, the way our ordinance currently is written, the widening at, the widening of the driveway, the flare cannot happen until five feet into the property. So I think a meeting in the middle with residents, I, I think what we could allow is allow that taper to begin right at the property line. That would then allow them more room to actually maneuver their larger vehicles or other vehicles into that third car garage or their parking pad adjacent to the roadway. So, yep, that's exactly right. Something like that.
Thank you.
Correct. And so, yeah, and what you can see with my black mark, I apologize, I'm not, not an artist. But the, on the side of the driveway, that's actually a residential parking pad. All of that that you see right there is allowed on, based on the current ordinance.
As is right now.
As is. There is no, even for residential parking pads, there is no actual maximum width requirement. There is only a minimum width requirement of 10 feet. Really what the, the stop mechanism for that is, all driveway or residential parking pads have to be located three feet off the neighboring property line. So if somebody's property line was 30 feet away, technically per the ordinance right now, they could widen their parking pad all the way to that three-foot offset and you could have a sea of pavement in their yards. So I absolutely think there are things that need to be updated in our, in our zoning code and our residential driveway standards. I just do not know if allowing 30-foot right at the right of way is the best approach until, you know, further studies are done. But I, I do feel that our current ordinance allows many options for residents to widen their driveways based on what their, what their particular needs are.
And you say this is your happy medium?
So no, and this is what the blue line that Joe drew.
The new line.
Yep.
Yeah, the new line.
The, the new line would be, I think, would be a reasonable, reasonable request. And yes, we are increasing the, the total impervious area on the lot. There are typically standards where you don't want to exceed a certain percentage of impervious area on a lot. But I think I'm more concerned about the ditch system. You can drive out to really any of our residential subdivisions and you can see the ditches have silted in. The, the culverts are not maintained. They're, you know, full of sediment and debris and don't actually allow water to pass through. Technically, that's a homeowner's responsibility. I understand that can be confusing when we actually have maintenance rights over the, the right of way. So ultimately, that's something that Troy and I have actually discussed is when we do our residential road programs, we are going to start looking into potential ditch grading and cleaning those out because it is just, it's seemingly impossible to get residents to keep up with that. It's, it's not easy work by any means. A lot of residents who do actually maintain that, they have landscaping contractors who do that work. But, you know, to, to expect an elderly resident to go out there with a shovel and clean out their culvert pipes is, is also not realistic. So, so I understand, you know, both sides of things, but yeah, I, I really think the 24-foot at the wide, right of way, what we would call, for lack of a better term, the approach would be better suited for a 24-foot. Again, if you drive on a roadway, that's two 12-foot lanes and a roadway is a, a desired lane width. So when you're traveling low speeds with vehicles, you could actually probably fit three cars in a 24-foot wide driveway. That doesn't leave room for door swings and things like that, but you can at least imagine the amount of room that they have to navigate and, and maneuver their vehicles.
I think, I mean, the big thing to look at too is that we, many, many of the driveways here are smaller, really, a lot of them are smaller than are already allowed. So part of it is, okay, you know, you can build, you can expand out, and we do, we should come in and redo their driveways and have that expanded areas. They have those different parking pad options that we have on there. So I guess the board needs to just think about inside, is what do you want to see on this? Do you want, is it, what, I guess, what are the purposes for changing it? Is it to have, you know, allow that straight, you know, large, large driveway area? Is it allowed, is the concern more the movement of the vehicles? Is that something that, you know, Brandon can put to other specific events for? Is it, you know, is this something we want to adjust based on overall property size, right? We're saying it's a large, large property, maybe that one we want to have more parking and more vehicles. So I guess it's what are you, what are you trying to accomplish? And that will sort of help us lead our, what we provide for you.
For transparency for everyone here, how did we get here? Why are we having this discussion? Alright, somebody came in on Valleymore Drive that wanted this for 30 feet, right? We could not give him the variance that we wanted to give him, we felt, unless we change everything. So to me, that's sort of like, you know, throwing a baby out with the bathwater, right? I mean, you change one for everyone. I don't, I don't think that's our intent. Our intent is to look at what his specific needs are and to see if we can meet those. So I don't feel that we should, I mean, that's, that's why we have this discussion here right now, based on one person coming and talking to us. I think that we do need to do a good job following up with them. Working with, working with him to see if, what Brandon just suggested, the 24-foot right of way makes sense. I think that, you know, he wants to start his project. I think that we should be able to talk to him and say, this is what we've done. But I don't think we should change everything because of that. I agree with the engineering perspective on it, but I think that we do need to accommodate our residents where it makes sense. And so I think that what I would like to see is our, our folks go out there and talk to him, talk this variance, how would you do it? But I think we should keep it at the recognition of the 24 right of way.
I liked Brandon's recommendation of bring the bump out down to the property line. You know, personally, my driveway is five foot. My truck doesn't even fit. And I don't, I just have a normal 150. So I, I can see where parking would be an issue for a small trailer or something like that. So I, I agree with bringing that down to the property line, at least right now. Until we can do the other studies and figure out, it's gonna have to go neighborhood by neighborhood, right? You know, I know.
Technically, yes. And, and that's kind of the, the hesitancy that I have is, you know, if you approve it, technically, everybody can apply for that and then would then be granted. We would have to grant that at the ordinance or something. And I think the domino effect could be, could potentially create some flooding issues that residents and constituents just do not really anticipate. But storms are getting more severe, rainfall is getting much heavier. And we, we have current, we have flooding right now in many subdivisions without these increased standards. So I, I would really be, I guess, concerned if, if this were, this were changed. I also do want to add, just so you can, it's kind of hard, it's difficult to tell Joe, could you go to the first exhibit? So the, the portion of the driveway, the bump out or the flare on this particular home, if you can see it way up there in the corner by the, yep, so I have an eight and a half foot dimension. Again, it's hard to see. That, if, if you're trying to navigate a vehicle and get that in the third car garage, there's no way you're going to be able to do that. Our ordinance allows that straight line off of the, it would be the, the left edge of the garage to come down 20 feet before it then tapers back into the 24-foot. This is just a simple whoever built the home and put the driveway in the first place, didn't know what our current ordinance allows and, and I'm not going to shame any contractors or, you know, driveway contractors, but it, it seems to me they didn't want to place the material, the extra material down to get them a wider driveway and something that's actually usable. So, so, yeah, I, I think there's many opportunities, many homes like this, as Joe stated, that, you know, have plenty of room to widen as, as approved by the ordinance currently. And then ultimately with those parking pads, it provides another level of space for, for parking vehicles.
Because that's only 18, right? So they could go.
That's only eight, that's only eight and a half. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. They could, that's only 18 currently.
So we could go 24 and then if we did your proposed change, that would really open most of it up.
Correct. Yep.
Almost here. And yeah, I would be.
And that is, just so you guys know, that is not uncommon. I know there's other municipalities in the area, one off the top of my head, obviously. I also served my time there two days a week, South Beloit. They have, their ordinance states that driveways can be 24 feet at the property line. And then the flare can begin immediately at the property in the line, not five feet in. So that is not an uncommon, I guess, ordinance for the, for the region.
One, one other thing, just with the culverts, what we're, you're talking about, that, that since it's a village-wide problem, we may need to look at putting some resources together to fix that problem. Because I know last year, Chickory Ridge, the whole back half of it flooded. My phone was blowing up, called Troy, did not sound happy. But he was dealing with, you know, he was knee-deep in water.
Yep. And, and yeah, absolutely. That's something that we, we are looking at in our residential road programs, doing that. It's just something that we want to make you guys aware that, that then, you know, we have a, a set budget, right? And that's just less technically roadway area that we can improve if we then have to improve the ditches. But as you said, it's a widespread problem. You can, especially in downtown, Old Downtown Roscoe, where a lot of the soils are very sandy and silty. Those erode very easily and there's culvert pipes that are completely covered and our minimum, minimum culvert pipe in the area is 15 inches. So 15 inches of sediment and debris filling those up over years and years, it's going to create flooding issues. Thankfully, we have sandy soils, so it's not as bad as it could be if we had clay-like soils. But it, it is a, it is an issue currently.
With that, because it's such a widespread problem, I, I'd like to at least see estimates of what it costs to start redoing just those along, you know, aside from the roadway projects. Because if, if we do it with just the roadway project, it's going to take forever to get the village fixed, if, if that's a flooding issue everywhere.
Years ago, we had a truck and actually went around and did that.
Right.
We had a big.
Some may just be taking a shovel, right. Some may be taking a shovel out and just cleaning them up.
We used to do that every day.
You know.
Yep. Yeah, we would have to look in depth because I, I stated some ditches, it's really only silted in around the culvert pipe. So we could use a, a back truck to clean that out. Other ditches, the entire thing is silted in and we would, we should probably do a full ditch regrading and reestablish that ditch. I, I do want to tell you that that would, that would take some time to, to go around and, you know, survey all of these areas. Put eyes on them, you know, eyes on them.
And just take the worst areas.
But that, that's exactly what we would, we would do some example subdivisions, compare it possible and present something to you.
Back to the topic, what's the consensus here? What's the recommendation?
To. What, I guess, well, I, I know what that accomplishes, what, I guess, when you're, I'm kind of, when you're, I guess, to do or direction a little bit.
Well, I, I, you know, I like what Brandon had said about the 24, 24 right of way, the pad here. And keeping the, not allowing it 30 feet all the way down, I don't think that's an appropriate thing. But I do think that we need to go back to the person on Valleymore and let them know that, you know, they're good to go with that 24 once this passes, so you can start.
They won't change. So they already can do 24, but the issue, I think.
Widening allowed per ordinance, 25, 24 at Row, right? That's what we're talking about, widening parking allowed per it's. So it's the same regardless, it's still the 24 out here, except it's a setback here.
Yeah, that's, yes.
Current ordinance. Yeah, so that is a lot of early current ordinance right now. So the only change that we may make that Brandon kind of brought up is bringing, so right now it has to be five feet and then a taper. But bringing that five feet to zero and then allowing to taper, that doesn't affect. It just provides a wider radius to where those vehicles could actually turn and.
Now we have to, now that's currently not in the ordinance, so we have to change it to that.
Right.
We would adjust when the taper started. She was, yeah, the recommendation would be bring it down to the.
That would be my recommendation.
Then would you like us to bring back that supposed to be sort of laid over, definitely? Well, if we can do this, then bring back that variance for the board. Essentially, I mean, at the end of this discussion, it would be denial still, but.
It would still be a denial in the sense of making it up.
This will allow a little more flexibility.
There.
Good question. I think that's fair.
Okay.
And I don't think we should have to wait any longer.
Good. But somebody overwhelmed, talked with him and explained.
I, this contact information, I'll offer to meet and help lay out what's allowed for, with the parking pad for his RV.
I don't know, we can do all of them.
Again, every single permit I offer.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, like Mike said.
Now, this one for Tiz, John, the trust, we did lay him over. Yep.
But what, what does it have to be tapered at? Is there a certain angle or?
Uh, no, technically what the ordinance says is the, it, it, the driveway can extend from the garage towards the roadway 30 feet. I, I believe it's 25 feet straight and then the, the five-foot taper has to be included in that overall 30 feet. So it, it really depends on how far your house is set back. Standard building setback in our, in our zoning code is 30 feet. But for instance, that example that I, I gave you right there, their house is set back 35 feet. So it just kind of, it depends on the lot layout and where the building is, is actually placed.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, well, so what process would be is that without go to that recommendation, we will take that to the CBA for public hearings on it. They'll have their hearing process on it for the text amendments. And then it will come back to the board, to the board level, based on the recommendations and affect the board, the actual change of the ordinance. And we'll get that started by CBA.
Thanks, Brandon.
Presentations, presentations, public comment. Is there any public comments? And just to be honest, CBA numbers here in general, so appreciate you guys for coming here and listening to our. Um, then, close session. Motion to adjourn. Uh, Robon.
Now, Teddy, yes.
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 Simon.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Adjourn at seven thirty P M and see if things are gonna start.